With due respect, I think a lot of this is share your bafflement. However, what we really need to hear from staff is, or from the Melgren Company, I think in particular, is some guidelines as to some hardcore recommendations to go forward.
Okay, you have some options on that. So, the process going forward from here on, outlined, is as you see on this screen, the Planning Commission acts that you would recommend to transmit this to the city council for adoption. It would be adopted on first reading. It goes to the Department of Economic Opportunity, that's the state land planning agency. They get a 60-day review of it, and then it comes back and it's adopted by the city council on second reading. But you have some issues here, and you want to talk about heightened densities. So, that's a policy decision, obviously, to be made by the elected officials. And you could do a few things, which would be up to the discretion of this commission on how they wanted to proceed. You could transmit it now, or recommend adoption by the city council. I'm laying out the options here. Utilizing the 5,000 ghost units, and leave it at that. You could recommend to the city council that they adopt it with a recommendation that the city look at increased heightened density. That would require the consultants, water and sewer and planning, to come back and do the studies and bring to you an updated plan, a presentation or a proposal for you to consider. You could table it for that to happen. That would be months, and the issue with that is, you would then not be in compliance with Florida statutes. And there is no punitive damage by the state for doing that, or punishment, but the issue is, if anyone came in for a land use plan amendment, the city would not be able to adopt it, a land use plan amendment for a specific property until this comprehensive plan was updated. And it's really up to you and to your city council as to what you want to do in terms of heightened density. Again, I wanted to make sure that you understood that the infrastructure is there. From a planning perspective, if we were to increase it in the plan, I can't just arbitrarily say, height they're not going to care about. The state doesn't care about that. Density is going to be their issue, and the impacts of increased density. I cannot put that in a plan and have the state approve it without having studies done to justify and demonstrate how the impacts will be addressed.
So, what you're saying is, the course of action here would be for the Planning Commission to recommend that those density studies be funded in the coming year to support further amendments to the comprehensive plan?
That's one option that you have. And I will point out, I know it's been mentioned from time to time that you can only amend the comprehensive plan once every seven years, to clarify, you can only do an year-based amendment. That's only required once every seven years. You can change your comprehensive plan.
My reading of the statute really allows, under 163-31-91, it pretty much allows amendments.
Right. Anytime you want.
Anytime you want, based on local changes and local conditions, which is what we're addressing right now. We're addressing local conditions, not state conditions.
And the appropriate studies would provide the groundwork for those changes.
The impetus for those amendments.
To demonstrate to the state that we have addressed impacts of increased density. So, that's what you could do there. With regard to the height, I'll go back to what I said. Height was taken out of the charter in 2007 and put in the comprehensive plan. I will defer to your attorney. I don't recall if the ballot read that it had to be in the comp plan, or if it was just coming out of the charter. But heights is obviously a policy issue. It's not an impact issue.
Yeah. What exactly is the significance of the height?
It's aesthetics. It's public preference.
Pure aesthetics. So, why are we limiting it in so many locations? And may I ask this. What from a planning and development point of view, an economic point of view, what would make people want to develop a certain parcel of land? What makes it develop? Why do we see high rises and higher density in some places than others?
You mean in terms of what's allowed, or why development happens?
Why developers? Yeah. What attracts them to develop something?
Money.
Okay. And what are the characteristics of the land that bring them to develop? Are they going to go out in the middle of the desert and build something?
Well, of course not. Kind of rhetorical questions, I think.
Right. But what are some of those things? They probably like to build up around parkland and stuff. Might be in something attractive, so you have a view.
Parkland, sure.
Like in Biscayne Landing, where they look out over the preserve, right? Possibly over a very vibrant city center that has really, it's already in place, that has something really attractive, and it draws people in.
Of course.
And it goes high. And possibly the waterfront. Is water of any value here in South Florida, the waterfront, going high-rise?
Probably yes.
Yeah. Why is it that this stretch of multifamily housing, south of Broad Causeway, is at just about the lowest density level? And that all four buildings that comprise that area are underzoned, such as, as I said, Mallorca Tower, which is 120, 119 units, and is now, could be rebuilt at 24 units? Why would that not be part of the study to reflect on us in somehow getting an upper end, a handle on something that's a little more attractive? We have other parts of this plan, if I'm not mistaken, that if you were to build this 110 stories, 110 feet, not stories, you're talking about nine, 10-story building, that basically be looking onto rooftops and pavement, and there are no parks, there's no waterway, there's no vibrant city center. I'm talking about the corridor at Sixth Avenue.
Right.
I don't know if there's much initiative to go build up there, nor would we really get something that's so attractive to the city. We just might get another larger burden to the city.
Well, to answer your question, if I may, and why is there not greater heightened density? If that's a recommendation that the board, the commission wants to make in moving this forward to the city commission, that the city council, excuse me, look at increased densities and heights, you know, to do the studies, to do the technical studies to support that, to get the state to sign off on it, that's the prerogative of this commission.
And then I would add the question, you know, when we talk about height and density, it can mean different things to different, you know, people. So, what kind of, because right now, the highest land use density in the city allows 110 feet. We are six right now.
Which is, you realize that's the height of some parking garages.
I understand that, sir.
In some cities.
But when you say height, we want height, how much height do we want? I mean, because this is those type of, you know, I mean, a recommendation that we want from you guys, you know, to see where we really want to go. Are we talking about 200 feet, you know, 500 feet?
Yeah.
So, those are, those is what we want. Because why, people can say, you know, we have 110 feet, that is a lot of height. But for us, we need that kind of recommendation to move forward.
Bill Mavish, a second. I just want to read something to you, if I can pick it up on this. I was in Coeur d'Alene, and the mayor, the mayor made a very profound statement. It's on a plaque. It said, "The space becomes a place when we add value to it. A space becomes a place when we add value." Coeur d'Alene is a beautiful city. Just happened to be there a couple of weeks ago. I look at northwest Seventh Avenue, okay? Let's, if we're going to be planners and planning commission and consultants, and we look at the totality of the county, and you get on I-95, and it takes you an hour to get downtown in the morning at 8:00, you think the people from Broward County want to keep going down there every day? Hell, no. Mass transit, it's not out there yet. We're talking about Tri-Rail, but we're still going to use our cars. Now, we have a gold mine sitting on northwest Seventh Avenue, from 119th to 143rd Street. And we got that crap out there, that Denmark's old property, dilapidated, right off of the corridor of I-95. Now, why don't we look at that and say, hey, let's go 30 stories here. Let's go sky's the limit. Let's get some developers in here with a vision for the future. You know, why the heck, if I'm a banker, and I live up in Broward County, do I have to drive all the way down to Brickell to my office? Let's create some beautiful structures out there. Not because for the last 30 years, we've been doing it this way, and we're going to continue to do it that way, and I'm going to go to the Seventh Avenue, Flea Mar. What kind of jobs are we creating? We're creating buckets, nothing, air. You know, I said this often enough, I'd rather have a wealthy city helping poor people than a poor city helping nobody. Now, Seventh Avenue is an ideal choice, right there. I would go 30 stories on the east side, right off the top. 119th Street, we know darn well that the expressway authority is going to come through there. It's coming. Whether we like it or not, it's coming. I want to cry when I come off the expressway, if I come back from across the state, or I come back from Orlando, or I come back from Broward County, and I drive down 119th Street, and folks, I've been in some terrible places in my life, and 119th Street reminds me of some despicable third-world country that I fought in years ago. It's terrible. Now, there's a great opportunity to turn that around and put that in, make that into a transportation hub over there. Maybe we rezone a couple of the blocks going north. But we got to start thinking realistically, this is shallow. I'm sorry, and let's hurt, I don't want me to be condescending to the consultant, to anybody on staff. This is a shallow plan. Folks, we've been asking for the last year to look at this thing, and let's get going here. I, you know, we're the indigenous. We live here. We know the heartbeat. And I think staff is very professional, and I'm not being condescending or knocking you, but, you know, I look at areas like 125th Terrace, and I say, what am I looking at this crap for? This could be knocked down, we could build beautiful high-rises, Arch Creek, Arch Creek Road, waterfront property, North Bay Shore Drive, waterfront property, West Dixie Highway. It's a sin. I go down to the Gables, and some of those streets aren't wider than 125th Street, and I see beautiful towers there. And that's what I want to see here. And honestly, to say something to the council right now and to give them this, no, no way. I would like, and I think what should have happened in this process, is that we, the Planning Commission, should have had the opportunity to look at that map and say, hey, I think we should do this on this street, this on that street, this on this street, we should redo this. Some of those streets over there on 131st Street or 123rd Street should be rezoned from residential to commercial.
And it should have been done with public input all these months.
And we should be doing this.
There was a chance for our public to have their input on this. And you have really denied the public. And that's the crime. Not just us, it's the entire public.
All right. Let me make a suggestion at this point. I've heard both of you, and your comments are not orphaned on this board. The board has consistently expressed desires for progressive change, and we understand the need for studies, but we also understand the need to add value to places. I'm going to make a suggestion at this point. It's appropriate for this project at some point tonight to move forward before the sun rises. So, with that goal in mind.
There's more to cover, though.
Yes, I don't doubt. And with that goal in mind, and respecting what you're saying, and having heard it many times before, let's give you guys fair 10, 15 minutes to make some specific recommendations as part of the process. And recommend that certain neighborhoods be given their height increases.
Well, I think.
So, we lay the predicate for that.
Okay.
Granted, we don't know what the council is going to do when it gets to them, but at least we're telling them, listen, we're hearing the need for development, and clearly we can't downgrade, we need to upgrade.
I have more questions for staff or for our consultants, and then we do have public input before this.
Yes, well, let's try to get you guys along.
Yeah. Let me, our consultant pointed out, and I believe quite rightly, that development is a monetary issue. It's if they can find a profit and such. It's fair to say that most developers don't go in and say, I'm going to lose my shirt on this. I'm going to spend much more and get less in return, right? Pretty fair to say. What numbers have you been working with, or where are the numbers, that you've tested the grounds on this plan, or any part of the city? Do you have, could you show us, or could you tell us what the cost of construction is, where you apply that cost of construction, what the return would be? Because I would think that'd be a pretty basic component of planning, is to see if there's any economic feasibility. Because I have a suspicion. Have any, any numbers you could provide us?
No.
Ma'am, were you ever done with your presentation?
Yes, I'm done with my presentation.
Oh, okay. So, there is no, there is no financial support. There is no reality-based thinking on this plan in terms of financial and economic development. Even though everybody says we want economic development. Let me, let me give you an example, then. I'll go back to this one tower, and I'm going to give you this Mallorca Tower. Here's a copy. And at Mallorca Tower, which isn't such a bad, but matter of fact, it's probably one of the best in the city. There are 119 units, as I said, and if you rebuilt it, you could build 24 units. Do you have any idea what the, what the sale price is per net square foot these days? No idea. Any idea what our apartments or condominiums go for? A nice condominium, what it goes for per square foot?
I believe you told me it was about $200 to $300 a square foot, if I recall.
Yeah. Well, this one, Mallorca Tower, right on the water, great views, not a bad layout. You're lucky, very, very lucky, it's the asking price if you can get 200. Some of them are now selling for closer to $100 a square foot. Construction costs on the gross exceed $200 a square foot. So, to get a net square foot, you're talking maybe 250 or more. When we talked to the people at Biscayne Landing, we went bent over backwards to try to accommodate them. We accommodated a multi-billion dollar firm, sold them four or five acres of land and gave away 45 acres of land, if you want to look at it that way, so they could build, you know, I think it's, I think the height is higher than what's called for here. I think it's higher than 110 feet.
25 stories.
25 stories. So, 25 stories. So, we're talking at least 250 feet, twice anything else in the city. So, we've penalized basically everybody in the city, except the multi-billionaire firm. Okay. So, at Mallorca, or anyplace else in the city, if we do this, think this through, for Mallorca, we could take down, we can't take down that building because we can't build up. But let's say, even if we said that you can do the same density, you would then pay $250 a square foot to get comparables that are about 150 a square foot. If it doesn't, that doesn't mean that you've counted the land at all. Waterfront property, that's zero value of the land. Zero value of the land. No cost in time of development, no cost for demolition, no cost for the new foundation system, none of that. If it doesn't work on one of the best pieces of waterfront property, probably in the entire region, what game are we playing with the rest of the city? Has anybody thought this through? Has anybody thought this through? And it is, it is appalling. It is absolutely appalling, because there is no reality to this. I respect commissioner each saying, oh, why don't we go here and build here and build here? There is no economic sense to that, and that's why it doesn't happen. Unless the government is coming and giving you a pile of money, it's not going to happen in this city. There is no incentive. There is no saying, oh, we're going to create a great park, and therefore we're going to have this other thing, so we're going to allow this, you know, at least for this next seven-year period, really almost unlimited heightened density, so that somebody could actually go out on a limb, and they would be going out on a limb, to do something. But even on one of the best parcels in the city, it doesn't work. And yet, still on this plan, you have four properties in a row that are all overzoned that can't be even redeveloped, to even say, we have something on the high end. What in this plan encourages anything on the high end, residential, or commercial, or retail, that says, there's an incentive to go, yeah, we're going to do something, we're going to really make an investment here, and bring in a Fortune 500 company or anything?
So, I mean, the issue is not so much of height and density, it's also even of appeal, from what you're saying.
We have, we're fooling ourselves. It's like we have a bag on our head. We don't, you know, we're going to say, oh, we'd like the downtown to grow, and this corridor to grow, and that. We don't even take the obvious spots and try to say, here, give it a chance. And if you were to do that, you would actually increase maybe the value of it. Let me give you something else that's of interest, and why our city is, you know, struggling. I, after a couple of years, I saw it, the taxes are going up so much, I'm going to go to the county. And I, we retained a company to tax appeal, tax abatement appeal. And we had a hearing yesterday. And at this hearing, at this hearing, the person representing us, who I think was an attorney, says, you know, it's, here's this zoning, and the zoning is, the county zoning has it as 22 to 37 units per acre. And that's why they're levying this tax on you, because you're zoned 22 to 37 dwelling units per acre. And that's what the county has. However, our property is zoned, so if we redeveloped it, for nine units. That's really a third, or if you go to the 37, you know, that's again, a fourth or a fifth. So, did you, I don't know if you knew that, or if you calculated it, but that really probably means that our entire city, and multifamilies in particular, are probably paying the tax rate of the county at this higher zoning that's expected and anticipated, when in fact, they are depressed. And then for, you know, they have this extra load, and you're not going to see them redevelop even more so. It's like a nail in the coffin. And I don't know if our community planning department knew about that. I think everybody in our city should know that that's the way things are being evaluated and appraised. But here it is. It's, their calculation is easily four times what actually exists.
I mean, the property appraisal website, whatever number they put there, is the actual numbers, you know, actually on the, it doesn't necessarily reflect the zoning. It's basically what is being built, they appraise the built structure. And then based, I mean, because remember also, a lot of those units were built at a time where there was no land development regulations. And even some of those property were downzoned from the last, you know.
And they were downzoned. They were downzoned. And if you want to hear something kind of funny, they're trying to get comparables, and they couldn't find any. They struggled to find comparables. And the explanation of that is one of two things. Either it's so wonderful that everybody's so content and nobody wants to sell, or that, you know, it quite isn't so wonderful, and nobody wants to buy. Which do you think it is in North Miami? Is it so wonderful that nobody wants to release it? Or it's so troubled that you can't get, practically give it away?
But I think, you know, but this is why, you know, this is really the very purpose of that meeting. And that's why, you know, okay, we staff, you know, we all have, you know, bounded rationality. I mean, we only know so much. And then this is why this process is one that we come here to really gather your recommendation, and then put, to even add, you know, more substance to this document.
Mr. LeBron, we've done that on workshop after workshop, month after month. We've done that. I have documents that were provided to you. I don't see it reflected in the plan. I don't see it reflected in the plan. Here you go. I'll pass it out again for everybody, anybody in the public who wants it. I'm going to pass out the 12 points that were mentioned. I don't see one of those reflected. Pass it down, please, and around. And then with that, I'll pass around three of those 12 points that were easily, could easily have been implemented. Easily have been implemented, because we had a discussion, you and I, and Aleem Gani, our city manager, we've had a discussion on this too, at length. And I still can't, maybe, maybe our consultant will be able to tell us why we can't do these. And Mr. Chairman, if I may be allowed, I'm going to read what I thought were three immediately implementable, common sense changes with no cost.
Bill, I'm going to let you read them into the record, but at that point.
We, as a matter of fact.
We read this in at the last, at the last.
Well, no, no, it's.
You need to be able to move forward.
We read this in already.
I don't see why we would pass this. I have no, I don't, if the, if we're supposed to be representing the council, and we're, the council's representing the city and the citizens, I don't know why we would rubber stamp this, you know, this is, it's.
Bill, here's the bottom line. We need to either make specific recommendations tonight, and be specific. We've had the theory, we've had the generalizations. We either need to make specific recommendations, or we go forward with what we have.
Okay. Is this a time where I could make?
Well, as a point of order, Mr. Chair, I would like to remind the board that they have to offer the public an opportunity.
Yes, and there will be a public hearing. And please, let's not drag this out till the sun comes up before we get to that point.
I'll hand this out, so the public can respond, you know, respond to it as well. And I'll ask the consultants if there is any, anything that would prevent us from doing this. And the first is, as a starting point, to use the zoning map that Melgren Associates derived and proposed during the last comp plan seven years ago. We had hired a consulting firm, they had done work, they had done their best effort, they gave us their suggestions of what was sustainable with our infrastructure, and yet it came out and was really obliterated politically, not through sound planning principles, but politically, it was obstructed. I have called on to bring that plan back that we've already paid for, that wasn't the benefit of the entire city, and to reinstate that. Their previous proposed politically unbiased plan is and was suitable for existing infrastructure. Implementing the earlier plan, again, should not cause any delays in meeting deadlines. There should not be any additional cost retrieving something the city has already funded. This has been, community planning development has had this since the last meeting, more than a month ago, I believe, or, and also repeated in recent weeks, as it was sent to the city manager. The second part, let me ask, is there any reason why we couldn't pull that plan out of the, out of the drawer and implement it?
As I mentioned to you prior to the meeting, I would have to talk to community development staff to see if they have that plan.
It seems like that plan should be available. It didn't just dissolve, and we could recreate it somehow. It'd be very, how the plan that was broadly distributed to the council, and then they then marked up, how that could have disappeared, what was actually presented by you?
It should be an agenda package and a city clerk's backup.
Yes. And that could be a starting point, because you already reviewed that and basically recommended that. So, we could use that as a starting point, right? So, this first part, there should be no trouble in starting with the Melgren plan from seven years ago, which is more progressive than what we have now. The second issue. Allow any existing building to be rebuilt at the same density or slightly greater, such as an incentive increase of 50 percent. Meaning, the current zoning in the city is politically undermined, and often much less dense than what exists. Many aged buildings throughout the city can only be built to a fraction of the current density. Deteriorating structures will not be replaced unless there is a positive economic incentive. This is one of the few cases tonight that we've heard of a positive economic incentive, that, yes, I will take on that effort to not take income on the property for a year or two, and put in the effort to rebuild it, and the cost that goes out there, and to do the financing, to have something that people could then be possibly proud of, and improve the environments of the people living there. Three, because you can do that on the single-family residences, right? We can take those down and rebuild those, unit for unit, and bigger. Yet, we can't do it on all these multifamilies, which are deteriorating and constantly being complained about at the city council meetings. Why are we having these problems in the building? Well, now we know why. Three. Exempt lower-level structured parking from height restrictions requirements citywide. Right? Developers will not give up precious zoning heights to accommodate parking below buildings. If structured parking is not penalized, developers will pay extra to house vehicles below. The result is a safer, flood-protected, value-p preserving, superior project with more open space. Basically, that means, and we went back seven years ago, where we saw something presented where they showed a lot, such as this. And in this lot, they said, this half is a building, and this half is parking. And if that doesn't like curl your spine, I don't know what would. Because basically, it means we're going to go lot to line to lot line, and we're going to fill it up with, you know, concrete and asphalt. Wouldn't it make maybe more sense to say, hey, I'll bump it up a little bit and put this one underneath, and this whole half of the lot could be green space and open space? And we don't have to look at the cars? We don't have to destroy the cars in the process? We have less noise, less bugs, more safety for the people? I mean, how hard is that? How hard is it? Now, does that increase the density if we put, if we lift this up? We said height wasn't a problem. If we lift the building up one or two stories, or even the bigger buildings, a few more stories, and put the parking below, does that change anything in the density factors, density considerations?
It shouldn't, and we could always, if there were an issue, we could always craft language to address it.
Okay. And the result might be that we'd have open space and possibly more desirable environment. Why was that not part of this plan? I mean, does anybody, and I hope that the public comes up, and says, wow, that's a wacky idea to exclude this. Because what's happened is, the developers have these limitations that are limited by height, so therefore, if they're squeezed down, they have to get everything they can into this height restriction, and therefore, they then throw the parking all around. And we saw a case here, even though actually, they weren't, where they wound up having this parking all around, you're on a first-floor apartment, how lovely to look out onto a parking lot. Who needs that? What kind of value is that going to bring to our city? What kind of safety does that bring to our city?
I mean, this is a very good point you're making. And then staff is not going to dismiss any of these points. And I think that's a discussion that can be continued later on, when we update our LDR to really address the issue of poor passing and parking. And I think, you know, what we need to be suggesting to get the staff in specific.
I, I don't know why we're so apologetic. This, this has been discussed by this, by this panel for years. It's been, it's been a few for, for many months.
Well, all right, Bill, let me try to move this thing forward a little bit here. You made three recommendations, okay? Let's see if we can get those adopted before the end of the night. But for now, we still need to get through a public hearing.
Thank you.
And this chair needs to get to the men's room. It is now after nine o'clock. Now, I have had great patience and I deeply respect you and everyone else that's up here. And I immensely enjoy listening to all of you, but there comes a point when I have to get up and walk away. And so what we're going to do.